Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October 8th, and today is a three-item work session for the Manatee County Board of County Commissioners. We will be discussing our legislative priorities, stormwater, and our transit service. But before we do, we will start, as we do all things, with the invocation and the pledge. Today's invocation will be led by Pastor David Cooper of Bayside Community Church, and our pledge will be led by our own Commissioner Mike Braun. Please rise if you're able.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you today, and happy to be here this morning and just represent our church, Bayside Community Church. The verse of scripture that I'd like to begin with from James, Chapter 1, Verse 5, says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." Just a short devotional thought before I lead us in prayer. Leadership is a sacred responsibility, and one of my wonderful teachers over the years, John Maxwell, used to say, "Everything rises and falls on leadership." And I know that you recognize that leadership is a sacred responsibility, and as county commissioners, the choices that you make impact families, communities, and the future of our county. God calls leaders to seek His wisdom, wisdom that brings justice, unity, and peace. And when decisions are made with humility and prayer, God provides clarity and strength. So I say today, may you lead with integrity, listen with compassion, and act with fairness, trusting that God's wisdom will guide every discussion and every decision for the good of all. You bow your heads with me as I lead us in a word of prayer. Almighty and eternal God, Creator of heaven and earth, in whom we live and move and have our being, we pause at the beginning of this gathering to acknowledge Your sovereign presence in this commissioner's meeting. We thank You for the gift of life, for the blessings of liberty, and for the community we're privileged to serve. We thank You for the opportunity to gather, for the privilege of serving one another. And Lord, as You guided Moses in leading Your people and granted wisdom to Solomon to govern with great wisdom and understanding, so now we humbly ask that You would endow these commissioners with discernment, with prudence and integrity. May their deliberations today be marked by justice, their decisions by righteousness and truth, and their service by compassion for all the people that they represent. We pray for each county commissioner and those who serve with them. Bless this county, its families, its schools, and its enterprises. Protect those who serve in uniform. We pray for all of our first responders. Sustain those in need and inspire all of us to walk in unity and in love, and may we do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with You, our God. Heavenly Father, grant us Your wisdom as we serve our community. Help us to lead with integrity, with humility and grace, and may every decision made here today honor You and bless those we serve. And it's in the name of Christ our Lord we pray. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. That was great. Okay, we're going to get started with... Are we starting with number one? I know I was asked to flip-flop one of them. Okay. Legislative priorities.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brent Anderson, Government Relations Manager. I know mine's one of the shorter presentations, so I'm going to try to keep it to that for you all. The goal of this is to just kind of get a consensus of the document from the board as to what to bring for a final vote on the October 21st meeting. We're going to look at it in three parts. We're going to look at it as the legislative priority section, the kind of FAC and NACO section, and then the appropriation request section. So the first two pages are legislative priorities, federal and state. These are the ones that we're actually going to actively be pursuing. They're kind of more detailed, more concise, and goal-related that we can accomplish in Tallahassee or in DC. There's one minor change to what you were emailed and what you have in front of you. The library has a little more detail, and I would ask to get an opinion to either pursue this or strike completely. After talking to Commissioner Ballard, we saw that there's a chance to potentially just kind of eliminate some language that could help accomplish the same goal. And so these six for the state and five for federal, those are going to be the ones that are on all of our handouts, all of our print material. When we go meet with legislators, the things we talk about, the rest of the document and things like that, that will either live on our website or be appropriation request type stuff. But these are going to be the ones on the leave-behinds for the legislators that we meet with. So these 11 are going to kind of be above them all. Do we have any questions for this section?
So, sorry, I'm not on the board. Okay. Okay. So my thoughts on library advisory, I'm good with this language to some point because it does allow us to meet our goal of expanding the library advisory board, both geographically as well as size, to make sure that it meets the needs of our community and includes people from East and North County. But my concern is that if we ever want to change it again, it's going to require us to go back to the state. So my personal preference would be to take it, to just strike it entirely, and bring it back so that we can create whatever ordinance we like, and then change it as the needs of the community change over time.
This is Commissioner Ballard's. I don't care what the language is. I'll support whatever she thinks is best on this.
Okay, so we'll put strike first, and if strike's not an option, we'll pursue the other route.
Sounds good to me.
Awesome.
And your underlines are gone from your speed limit thing.
And also, there's just a couple little typos, which I'm sure you'll...
Yeah, well, the drafts...
And what paper is this?
What? The draft's constantly been moving, so we'll clean it up before the final copy. Okay, so the next section, you will see FAC, NACO, and kind of general policy. With FAC and NACO, they support so many policies, and it's so detailed, it gets really lengthy.
Wait, I'm sorry. I did have one other thing.
Oh, yeah.
To go forward. For the second to last one on the first page, when you talk about live local, listing all the apartments under 100, there's so many versions of live local, there's so many sections of it. Some of them are based on, if you could just build a couple of units. Some of them are a minimum 70 units. Some of them are tax abatement. Some of them are just density bonuses or as-of right. They all have different AMI. This is extremely vague. What are we referring to here? Because like, if I read this and I want to interpret it arguably the wrong way, then you could say that 100% tax abatement's at 100%. Right now, 100% tax abatement's are at 80%. So in this case, I can interpret it to imply we want an even broader tax abatement. Like, this needs to be more... There's multiple sections to live local. We need to clarify what section this is referring... I believe the impression is to strike all on all 120% thresholds and lower it to 100. I'm guessing that's what you're attempting to do.
Yes.
As just a clean slate across all of the sections, that 120% is not deemed affordable by this board or any board, and therefore, the maximum for any section should be 100. I argue it should be 80, but I see where you're going with it. But this doesn't clarify that. This could be interpreted the wrong way.
Okay, we can add more detail to that. All right, so the FAC and NACO sections, as you all know, those are very detailed, a ton of pages, a ton of different things they support. So what we tried to do here is give a kind of generic support to FAC and NACO at the top of them, and then highlight some of the more key aspects that we might overlap with them here in Manatee County. And so that's what this page is. One minor change from what you were emailed is we added National Environmental Policy Act reform. We added that to the document that you have printed in front of you.
My one comment on this is, FAC is very back and forth and hesitant when it comes to tourist development tax. My only concern is if we bring this to a meeting and someone... All the rest of these changes to Senate Bill 180, property tax, home rule, we could talk about those all day long. If someone point-blank asks us to our face at a sit-down meeting, what are you supporting for FAC relative to tourist development tax? Right now, there's not a whole lot. I mean, we have our final legislative session. There is a couple of policies for tourist development tax proposed this year. There is every year to open up some flexibility to allow people to collect more, open up flexibility for how you use it, like, for instance, fixing up infrastructure on the island because tourists use infrastructure. There's been a big hesitation, in fact, to strongly push that, only because we're afraid if you open up that can of worms, and once that Pandora's box is open and it allows the Senate and the House to change tourist development, it could start changing the wrong way because now all of a sudden, the hotel operators and so forth all get their hands into it. So there's been a little bit more of a, let's stand back and let's take what we've got kind of stance.
Okay.
But there are proposals every year, and I don't know what's going to finally get through up in Hillsborough in November. But I just be hesitant because if someone asks us about all these other ones, we can talk about them.
Yeah, I'm with you.
That one I couldn't because I couldn't give a clear, defined impression of what FAC's stance is on that particular line item.
Yeah, with it being in November, we kind of tried to get ahead of it, but I agree.
Understood, but that one, every year, it comes up with multiple policy proposals, especially from places like Orange County, Monroe County, places that are heavy on tourist development taxes. Monroe County because they're light on some other taxes.
Absolutely.
And every year, there's a whole big back and forth. It's not a unanimous thing like retain home rule.
Yeah.
Or something like that. I couldn't speak as intelligently on tourist development tax if we were asked because I don't think there's an intelligent way of explaining FAC's position today.
Yeah, okay, so we can kind of take that off of the list there.
Yeah, I would just ignore that one.
Great. Any other questions on the FAC or NACO sections? Okay, so then, behind the appropriations request, you're going to see additional policy positions. Now, this is kind of lengthy, and from some conversations with you all, this is going to live on our website. This isn't going to be on the print material that we necessarily hand out to all of the legislators that we meet with because, as you can see, there's a lot of different priorities on here and policies on here. These come from the department heads that we met with and things like that, that they want us to stay on top of, monitor, and if we see the opportunity, take, act on. And so for these policy positions, we're kind of asking that they could be a part of the document as well. They'll live on our website, but this is more for internally. We can know what we're looking for, know what we're trying to find in DC and Tallahassee, and then as bills get passed or start moving, we can try to affect them based on these.
I look forward to seeing which appropriations get funded this year.
I strategically saved that one for the last conversation.
Okay, we haven't gotten to that part.
We haven't gotten to that part yet.
You skipped it. Okay, I thought maybe you skipped over it. I was going to go back to it, but if you haven't gotten to it yet, I'll wait for it then.
Yeah, that's the last one.
At one point, these additional policy positions were like eight pages long.
I trimmed them quite a bit.
So I haven't gone back through to see what was trimmed and what wasn't. Is there...
A lot of it was more consolidated, so we kind of went through, and if it was like, keep funding the same for this project, we kind of made it, keep funding the same, and then combined it all the projects into the same point.
Didn't we have something in there about the dual treatment of water if we inject it down into storage wells at one point?
Yes.
Is that still in there? Because that's important.
So we didn't pull anything utility-related from here. So my understanding is it would be in here, but if it's not, I'll make a note and make sure to include it back in if we took it.
Yeah, because that is super cost prohibitive, and I know we've looked at that as an option for anyone listening at home. It's an opportunity as additional storage where you can basically inject your water down into the aquifer as a storage and then be able to bring it back up. It adds to our capacity. Peace River deals with it. The problem right now is you have to treat it twice because you have to fully treat it to send it down, and you have to fully treat it to bring it up because of arsenic and other things that seep into it, which requires double treatment and chemical costs. Some of the chemical costs have gone up like 700% since COVID. So I know that's significantly hitting Peace River. We don't buy water from them, but we sit on their board. But I know we've looked at it, but there's been a question of its economical incense, just because of, in part because of that. And I know there's been a big push at the federal level, and people have talked about the state level about trying to remove that.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get that in there if it's not. Great. If there's no questions on this section, we can move to the star of the show, if you will, the appropriations request. So we have five state, four federal, 12 million at both, barring one thing, and we'll get to it with Fresh Start Federal side when we get there. But if we want to start with the state projects, and then we'll end with the federal projects, state, we have Veterans Resource Hub, recommendation of 3 million. We have Singletary Road Bridge Replacement, recommendation of 1.5 because the state requires a match in the House side for that. So if we went with that project, it would be the 1.5, and then they would request a match for that to get to the total project of three. 51st Street Extension, recommendation of 3 million, and then Fresh Start Phase 2 State Side, 2.5, and then Anna Maria Pier 2.
I have a suggestion on the title. 51st West Extension should be called Charlie Kirk Memorial Parkway Extension.
We haven't technically voted.
No, we haven't. We haven't. But if we do...
I second that.
If we do, prior to...
Commissioner Bearden is on Zoom for anyone watching.
Once we officially do that, that should be changed in our materials.
And for now, you can even put, you know, something in parentheses in the intro that, you know, currently...
I could add it to additional information right now.
However, you worded it. You're a better wordsmith than I am. But something implying that it's something that the board is working towards.
Yep.
And then we can make it official.
Yep, I will add that. Any other additional comments on those five requests?
No, I look forward to it.
Okay, great. All right, so now for the federal. Veterans Hub, 3 million. That project moved great this year. So then we have Gateway Greenway Trail, specifically a different phase than the one that we currently requested federally this side. So this will be a different phase of the trail. The total project for that trail is 6 million, so we're going to do 3 million this year, and then hopefully, with board support again, 3 million the following year to get it all paid over those two years. We have Gamble Creek Flood Mitigation Area, 3 million. And I know I spoke to you all about this, but the cool part about this project is it includes some mapping in that as well, so we can kind of work on the infrastructure and the flood mitigation, but also get some good mapping done. And then Fresh Start Phase 2 on the federal side, as you can see in your printout, there's no dollar amount right now. We have 3 million. It's kind of like an internal placeholder, but I've been playing phone tag with Dr. Marbit from the Trump team and trying to speak to him before we put down a final number on there. As long as you all are okay with whatever number he says, or $3 million, we're good with that project. Awesome. Well, my goal of keeping it short was good unless there's any other questions from you all.
This is a marked improvement, I'm sure, from prior years. I like seeing the specificity, especially with respect to our policies, and like to see more FAC and NACO stuff on there too. So thank you. And thanks for working with us, I'm sure, and you worked with myself and I'm sure other board members on the various policies and appropriation requests. So just wanted to commend you all for significant improvements that have been made from last year to this year as far as really everything related to our state and legislature, state and federal priorities.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, you wanted to switch to transit now. Okay, we're going to jump ahead to number three for transit services.
Good morning. Chad Butso, Public Works. Excited to come here and talk about transit. To set the stage, you don't have to watch me babble today. Kevin and Ryan will take care of the majority of the talking for transit. I do want to set the stage that we had had plans to come to you for quite a while this year. It was to, the intention was, we did an analysis of what is being successful as the costs continue to rise in transit and really talk about the options of what is the best way to use the limited amount of funding. If you recall, you took some briefings over the course of the summer, right around Memorial Day or just after Memorial Day. That was really understanding the deep trouble that we've been having with putting enough operators in seats to keep every route running that we currently offer. That has delayed the intent of coming back on this. So not only are we here to talk about the delivering of the service and what is important to the board as a policy decision to reinforce what is the overall mission of transit. Also, we're going to review the state of transit just because it's been a long time, and certainly this board has not had an overall presentation on transit. We will move very quickly through here, but so there's a reason to start with some a little bit of beginnings and then understand at the end, we do talk about recommendations on where we feel the best investment of your limited resources should go. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Hoyt, Transit Division Manager. So I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Hoyt, Transit Division Manager.
Good morning. So now you get to hear me babble. And hopefully I can present things pretty clearly here. All right, today's objective is the, just to provide you guys the current state of transit itself and the challenges we face with, you know, our staffing issues, especially with our operators, and discussing how we currently optimize our service and in the future as well as what we're going to speak about and introduce a new service model. So three types of modes that we use in transit is of course the fixed route, which is our big bus, paratransit, ADA and TD. And also what we did with our pilot program was the Veterans On Demand, which has been pretty successful. I think we've reached about 1,000 riders so far since inception. What you see right in front of you, this graph right now just represents the fixed route system. So I don't have my glasses on, but it might show the frequency, you know, our core routes with our, which are our core routes are our 99, which is our State Road 41, Manatee Avenue, Cortez, and of course our Beach Trolley. So our ridership has gone up, you know, I think pretty drastically, especially going free fare. As you can see, the big jump from fiscal 2.3 to 2.4. We hit over 2 million riders last year. It's a little bit of a dip this year where this slide's not really up to date, but it's 1,900 and change. So we almost hit the 2 million mark for the consecutive year. The reason for the drop was of course the hurricanes that kind of impacted the trolley and also reduction of our staffing, which we'll talk about in a little bit. This is our fixed route system. What you see right here is the highlighted in orange is our grant-funded routes that have assistance. Also, it's what we use in transit to kind of do some data analysis. This is our riders, you know, what you see right there, riders per service hour is a benchmark in the transit industry. So you kind of look into that to see if there's lower productive routes annually or monthly. Actually, we do it monthly. As you can see, our systems, I'm going to tell you, is, is, is pretty good. Anything over 13 passenger per revenue hours is actually considered decent. But what we're doing here is we're going to talk about optimization on our lower productive routes in our next slides. All right, paratransit. There's actually two modes of paratransit. The Veterans On Demand just got stuck in here for some reason, but it's ADA and TD. Veterans On Demand is a, is a separate multimodal microtransit. Paratransit ridership, as you see right here too, took a little bit of a dip during COVID. We implemented some income-based eligibility as well, but as you can see, it's starting to rise again. Where the expert right next to me sitting down right here is Benita Zara. So been in the industry for 30 years, so she's following this very closely. Staffing levels. Now we're getting to the meat of what, what I'm here for. Okay. So we've been struggling for several years right now for staffing, especially this past year in 2.5. I went to HR and discussed with HR, we actually hired 28 new operators, of course, this, this past year. 20 operators, but we lost 28. So the retention is an issue. It's an industry problem right now. I can't dial in and tell you exactly what the issue is, but I have some ideas. Operator staffing and retention. The neighboring counties right here, as we spoke about, I spoke to most of the commissioners one-on-one about the pay scale nearby. This shows that Breeze in six years will make a top wage of 28.50 and it has PSDAs as well, Pinellas County, after four years. So they had, they implemented that program. So that's one aspect of, of, of an issue of a career path for bus operators for retention. Impact to service. Okay, now we're going to talk a little bit about optimization here. Since we're having staffing issues, we're losing about 16% of our daily routes. Which routes, as you can see on this slide right here, it's, it's the routes that mostly have the most frequency. So most frequency means the most buses. We can't route eliminate a route that has one bus. So I want to emphasize that unfortunately, we, we have picked the Beach Trolley, Route Two and Route Three, which has the most buses and, and frequency in our system. So that's what we're doing as a team to, to optimize the current situation for the least amount of impact. Service optimization guidance principles. Again, earlier I talked about what we're looking into, the passenger per revenue hours, the, the buses on the routes. But I want to show you guys here is 62% of our ridership is actually our core routes. So those are the routes on 62%. So the 99, the Beach Trolley, the Route Three, the Route Six, Cortez, Manatee Avenue. I just want to see if I don't miss anything here. Again, this is a service detail. This is the data that we use right here with, I don't have my glasses on here. Oh, okay, so what you see highlighted and, and red right here is what we're kind of, why I'm here today. To eliminate the lowest productive routes. And what you see in the, in the yellow here is, is a reduction of our fixed routes. So we could maintain a good level of service for the community. I know it's tough to speak about it, but there's different ideas that we could reinvest in further slides. But those are the routes that we're targeting through the optimization.
Let me add something.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good morning, everyone. Ryan Suarez with Kelly Horn. I just want to emphasize here, even though staff has looked at routes that are 20 per hour, 20 rides, that's a really high standard compared to other agencies in the area. Ridership here is very strong, so they're having to make cuts on what would otherwise be considered really strong routes in order to, in the previous slide, match staffing levels to the level of service, to the published schedules that are being put out in, in the public. So just a point to emphasize, and again, a lot of this has to do, well, the ridership has to do with the free fares, the fact that you do have a strong base of regular riders that use MCAT for a variety of different reasons. So I'll leave it at that.
Ryan's right. You know, I've worked at other agencies and it is, it's common for passenger per revenue hours to be actually below 10. We, we do have a, a good system in place here. It's okay. The routes that.
Oh, whatever. Okay, just a little detail here.
The Route Nine we're looking at.
Okay, so it's the ones in pink?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Route Nine.
So, and this is based on the fact that these riders per service hour are the least that we have. As compared, and you said in the 20 range is actually a high, high usage number, but it's become our standard.
Anything over 20, I mean, is, is good. I mean, for the optimization for our system itself. And I mentioned before, I wanted everyone to, to take note that 62% of our ridership is on our core routes.
Of course.
Yeah.
Because I have very little mass transit in my district. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If we try to put a bus in my act, we get screamed at by them.
The clarity on, on here with the two colors, so the pink being routes that were recommended for elimination. The yellow is something that used to have two buses operating at given times is reducing to one. So at the moment, the recommendation to deal with our staffing levels and be able to provide a service that it doesn't also include daily reductions in service. So we meet our advertised recommended service, are recommending just reductions at the moment. Our intention when we started this exercise in March and April would have been to show you something that was reductions, but reinvestments in increasing service, like reducing headways, say from 30 minutes to 20 minutes on other core routes. But we do not call that a responsible thing to offer to you right now, considering we're just getting by on the staffing reasons. With the recommendations that we showed you on that chart, the routes that here are listed in red are the equivalents of the ones that are recommended for being deleted to give a perspective of what areas have, are getting service reduced. Another way to look at that, yes, sir?
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
Oh, another way to look at that is, this is a geographic item that just was showing the, the three-quarter mile buffer off of a route. So it's a very distinct, it was attempting trying to say an area, a neighborhood associated with a route that potentially is impacted. Typically, people that use a fixed route transit live something within close proximity of where the route used to be. It's trying to give you a picture of the areas impacted if said routes were discontinued.
Something for context, I've looked at a variety of public transit systems, large and small. 20 is pretty good and above. When you're talking about 30, you're talking Miami Day, just for context, you're talking, I would say, a lot of north, cities in the northeast corridor, like New York, DC, all that. I don't necessarily think you want that here. A lot of people don't want that, which I mean, that makes sense.
In season on the trolley, maybe the only time we'll see that.
Yeah, the trial, or highly dense concentrated areas during peak hours like that.
Certain phases of 99.
So I think the 20 and up is good. I mean, even Pinellas, back in 19, I think they were reporting 16 to 18. I couldn't quite find more accurate recent numbers, but I never looked specifically at the Sunrunner and then they just opened up the Spark. I think that's what they call it, the new bus, bus rapid transit route. So the concern or, can we go back to the table view? One more, right. So East Bradenton Route Two. So the concern there is we have a route that we can't support because we don't have enough bus drivers. What was the issue there?
That is having the frequency. It, it's going from 30 to 60.
Okay.
Did I get that right? Or 90 to 60, 30 to 60?
And, oh yeah, that's very infrequent.
It will accommodate the staffing problems as well.
Can we go to the map again where it plotted out the different routes? Not this one, but it was one earlier. You first started off with it. Okay. Where is the Route Two on this map? Okay, I see it. Now, when we looked at the routes, the services to cut, did you also look at the land use in those areas as well? So one of the indicators or one of the, one of the precurs, one of the, one potential indicator of what might be a healthy transit system is what, what is the land use around it? How dense is it? You all know this, but I'm just curious if you compared that with the bus routes that we have today. When was the last time we did that? Just curious. Because some places it makes, like Parrish, they're, they're very spread out. They're not, you don't have a lot of multifamily development. So obviously those routes may not be as productive, but just curious if land use analysis was conducted too.
At this level, right now, sir, not that much. What you can see definitely by, eh, call it the circuitous routes of the selections. The lesser routes that aren't the main lines, you could tell got added at later times during the life of the transit system. I definitely would agree, there may need to, may want to be considered a touch, a tweak to soften a blow on certain things. That Route Two covers a lot of SAMO set and there's a few services along that area, including schools that do benefit from that route, but it, it's just the data as well as far as net ridership that made that recommendation.
Okay, that's all I have for that for now. Thank you.
I have a question. When we decided which ones we're going to pull, did we decide simply based on lack of total ridership in comparison to others? Or do we compare it based upon a cost savings per rider? Like, it's all well and good saying there's only 68,000 people on State Road 70, but I mean, if that works out to less cost per person than something else. I mean, did, did we look at all the metrics in this? Or we just say less people ride that? I mean, sometimes less people ride it because the 13 line only, only comes once every other hour. Like, that's inevitably going to be us, but if it's only coming once every other hour, it's also going to be cheaper to operate because it's only, it's running on 120-minute schedule. If you made that a 30-minute schedule like Cortez, maybe there'd be 500,000 people on there. I mean, especially up in Palmetto, we've approved multiple, you know, affordable housing projects and multifamily projects. And part of the justification for it was that there's transit in the area. And now there's no longer transit and we're doing it based upon the fact that only 62,000 people get on the buses, but we only send the buses every other hour. So you're dissuading people from even using the bus and then taking the bus away because people aren't using the bus that you're trying to convince them not to use in the first place by having inferior service. Did we assess all of this or we just do a blanket, let's sort this by total ridership and cut the bottoms? Which may be pennies. I mean, you know, I, I don't have, because you only put the cost on here of the ones we cut. And I'm just hypothetically, I'm not advocating to cut anything. But like the Manatee Avenue route has a lot of people, but also comes every 30 minutes. If you told me that route costs us $10 million, I know I'm making up numbers, so I'm trying to prove a point. That's $10 million and we could literally fund the entirety of the rest of our transit and improve all the rest of the transit to make them 60 minutes or less by cutting that one route. That's a discussion to be had, not, I'm not advocating, I'm just saying. I don't have enough information here because I don't know the cost of what we're leaving and what the trade-off. Like, when we did that whole analysis of do we fund Lorraine or like literally everything else? There was a presentation of the options here that showed the cost of different things and the trade-offs if you fund one versus fund another. Here, it just seems like we, we cut the lowest tier ones, but the lowest tier ones were typically the ones with the worst service encouraging the lowest tier. But they could also have been the cheapest ones. And you could tell me that cutting the eight line by itself would otherwise fund all of the rest of these lines. That's, that's relevant information.
So I was going to say, I led us down this road because for, certainly we've had numerous discussions with individuals along here about talking, what is the mission? What is the overall goal, goal for transit? I mean, there's overriding goals that are policy decisions that are, it's meant to stimulate and reduce traffic on roads. It's meant to encourage redevelopment in the urban core. It's meant to get riders of choice. We've talked about the idea of we want more frequency on Cortez's, we want less car on Cortez. We want things like that. So it was focused with a lot of that in mind. But yes, that type of discussion is exactly what I was hoping to get here because it, the, the recommendations are heavily weighted on a desire to reinvest in the core network as far as.
Sure, and if you, but if you're going to do that, then I would almost, again, without numbers, I'm not telling, I'm not advocating, I'm just stating. If that's the case, then what you're better off doing is basically telling everyone, we're re-envisioning the entirety of this thing and we're essentially going to have like four main lines. And it's going to be the 99 going north-south and it's going to be Manatee, it's going to be Cortez, it's going to be the trolley. And we are going to hyper fund those things, so they're all 15, 20-minute, max 30-minute routes to make them super efficient, that everybody wants to ride them all, all the time. And then we're going to take the additional funds and work on last mile delivery off of those core spines to help get people where they want to be. Then you're getting somewhere, because now this seems like it's a Band-Aid. This seems like we're, and next year it's going to be something else because we're going to lose a couple of other bucks to next year. And then it's going to be like, okay, now it's, what are we going to take next? The eight line? That'll be a 16, and we're going to keep tripping, trimming away at this thing. And, but. But if you said, we're gonna take a whole step back here, we're gonna focus more on the on-demand, people like the on-demand, people like last-mile delivery, we're working on trails, we're working on other options for getting people places, we're going to dump everything into these four routes, five routes, whatever is determined, and we are gonna make them all so super-efficient that you go sit on a bench and fifteen, twenty minutes later, thirty max, depending on time of day, you're gonna have a bus come, leave your car at home, because we're gonna be there for you rain or shine. Then you're gonna start getting some ridership, then you start looking at a meaningful savings on a cost per rider, and then we take those savings and we start figuring out how to get people from that core line to where they actually wanna go. If you wanted to do that, you might as well go all out. If you're gonna cut half of these, you might as well just reinvent the entirety of the process.
May I? Absolutely excellent points. And I think my concerns for my district are maybe a little bit more future discussion, but I think as Commissioner Cruz said, I think that what we'd like to do here is a little bit more of a bigger picture with things. And the first thing that I go to is, you've stressed staffing issues. Staffing issues are not unique to absolutely anything in this world right now. We have a lot of people that need a lot of services, we've got a lot of repeated issues and errors that affect every single one of us, from me just trying to get somebody to cut my grass, okay? With staffing, we look at the quality of recruitment, the training offered, and the retention methods. I'd like for you to give us some, instead of, everybody does the same thing, and I understand, you know, you wanna know why I can't get somebody to cut my grass? Because it's ten acres, okay? Maybe it's above people who have trained to ride a zero-turn lawnmower, I don't know. But I do wanna know, from your perspective, if you're going to claim that your biggest problem is staffing, then I would like for you to express to us how you have ascertained what the problem is with staffing, and if you have any suggestions on how to buoy that problem. If we're talking about, do we have recruitment issues? Do we have training programs? Do we have retention issues? This is a repeated issue that is stated everywhere. So if that is the problem, then I'd like to hear how we could solve that problem. Maybe if we solve the staffing problem, we could have adequate bus service, and I could look at, in District One, having mass transit one day, or addressing intermodal things, or even if we can't service some of these areas, look, we did a great thing by offering private, or the free bus service in this town. That was an amazing thing to do, but we already knew at that point that that was gonna give us some budget constraints. And maybe we are at a point where we need to still create that, but have more, nothing in life is free. We're gonna pay for it. It's achieved its purpose, we've gotten people over a little bit of a hump, but now we have to deal with the budgetary issues that have come up with it. We're gonna have to deal with our staffing restraints. How do people get trained? How do we keep them? How do we monitor whether there is a career path? Okay? I mean, do you start off as a bus driver and then end up standing in front of me, telling me you need more people and money? Were you a bus driver at any time in your career?
I was.
Right, right? But there you are today. So you had a career path. So do you see a way in that you could use those, that experience and those skills that you came up with to bring this into our county? Because I think you're from Polk County, correct?
I worked at Hillsborough.
Hillsborough, it's various counties. So a great avenue and a success story, right? So if you say we don't have a career path, I think we've got the right person there that could maybe make those career paths for others, having experienced themselves. So let's talk about staffing. Is it recruitment?
Ma'am, I would love to just talk.
Just give me your top three. Is it recruitment?
Two separate issues. The service development, service deployment is one thing of what we feel is the priority of where we feel our resources to go to. We brought up staffing because our recommendations that we should pull back our posted schedule because we're just not able to meet it right now under the current staffing mode.
Right.
So, working with HR, we've offered October, end of October, we've got another hiring fair at Transit. We did one in August, as many as we get. I'm not trying to say it's awesome for somebody that needs a job and wants the benefits. It's not for everybody, is what we found out. They're not Monday-through-Friday jobs, they're not seven-to-five jobs. It's a split schedule, you'll work a weekend in there. We get so many people that start and say, I can't deal with the people, I can't deal with the schedule. Those are the hardest retention pieces of what goes through everybody that thinks they start and think they wanna get into the business. We are attempting to try to deal with, I would love to think, a military recruitment, somebody that just got out, wants a job, wants insurance, doesn't know what they're gonna do for their second career. We just have not hit a routine niche to keep inflow or to keep somebody steady for seven years. The vast majority of our average starting age is excess of fifty-five, probably closer to sixty. I mean, it's truly those people that are working for insurance, spanning the time till Medicare kicks in. That is, that is the unfortunate truth. I believe the school board was typically struggling with the same thing.
Absolutely.
I think we exchange operators back and forth between SCAT and, not SCAT anymore, Breeze and us. Somebody either thinks the grass is greener or dislikes an individual. The career ladder, the path forward, I'm sorry, I'd love talking about that, that is for the few, that is not something that's practical for the masses. We're talking over a hundred bus operators in a system of our size, a supervision ranks of less than ten, a management ranks of three or four. I mean, not everybody's ever gonna make it.
But you do understand, from where I'm looking at this, is how are we going to, and again, District One really is an extremely growing area, we have an extreme amount of growth with an extreme lacking of infrastructure, that I feel that mass transit might be one of those things that we could give some solution to. But if we don't have people now, and we don't have a plan for how we're gonna have people later, I can't grow in my district without that. If you wanna start now with having some sort of a plan for adequate recruitment and training in this career path or whatever, and I'm expecting to have bus drivers in my district in the next ten years, you gotta have a little bit of vision, and now. And maybe we, maybe, maybe in that, but again, like I said, you've got a double restraint. There's no income to, you know, because we were doing the free bus rides, and Commissioner Cruz, again, I think it was a great idea. And we know that a lot of our worker, our people are, that are riding the bus, we have workers, and they have to be somewhere at a certain time. That's why bus schedules are important in those areas. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Cruz said, as far as, maybe we need to, you know, we haven't really taken a, and this is again, the same thing with kind of ignoring that District One, you know, doesn't get anywhere past Ellington Mall or the Walmart, and you've got a huge amount of people to start serving out there. And I wanna ask you a question, how many county employees ride our county buses to come to work?
We don't have that survey. I think HR did that at one time, but it's very.
And now, we're going to be using another office building in Lakewood Ranch, right? We're moving half of us to a twenty-four-million-dollar building in Lakewood Ranch, okay? There may be some small shuttle services and things like that, that maybe I could see District One growing into. But I agree that there's, there seems to be a need for a little bit bigger picture here with this, rather than, I'm assuming the ask is always going to be, what do you need? More money? If money isn't gonna bring in your staff, if money is not going to evaluate your routes, we do have, we do have some main thoroughfares that should be focused on, and then that get-to as a secondary thing. But I just want you to keep in mind that a lot of my questions are not just as far as where we are today, but I've got a huge growing community out there that also pays taxes, that doesn't get the same service. And I wanna make preparations for us being prepared to do that in a way that solves your issues today, but has some sort of outlook and some sort of look into the future that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on things today.
Perfectly said, with the intent of what I was getting to as far as I'm looking to deal with the change in transit. When I did the reinvestment in the urban core, the part that's not discussed here is what we went through with the budget process. You heard your CFO Sheila mention several times through the budget process, transit's troubling, the cost of transit is increasing. So the intent with what we had hoped with even a reduction and a reinvestment would be reduction in services somewhere with the intent of reinvesting with the idea of more frequency, but you'd still be at a net lower cost. Staffing-wise, I can't offer the reinvestment right here, but the intent was to try to figure out a way to, where could costs get lowered with at least what you do? The last end of the presentation was to jumping in to acknowledge, there are the growing areas, the Parrish and the Lakewood Ranches areas have been saying they want transit service, they want transit service, they want transit service. In some ways, we've, us and the industry experts have said that the density that is built out in those areas, they just will not support anything that's a fixed route service. So then what does that mean? What does that mean? Everybody says on-demand's the answer. Well, a form of on-demand probably is the answer, but there's a policy decision that I really challenge everybody to think about was, is it to connect to the fixed route service that that's what they want? Or do they want discounted Uber? Do they want to go from their house to somewhere else in Parrish? That's not a service that the fixed route exactly operates there. So I mean, that's where I'm challenging, and I'd be willing to say, this is a bigger topic to decide. What is the intended mission that you want for your transit system? We did our major TDP update in 2023. It was probably right in the midst of the giant growth that we're, have realized and we anticipated the needs to discuss on-demand, and it was a developing service. We had no envisions that it would be a discounted Uber. In our minds, it is connecting Parrish to Rocky Bluff Library, so therefore, you can get on the fixed route and use that. It was point to transit system. If it was Lakewood Ranch, it would connect to another transit system. We were not envisioning those offerings as a door-to-door service, as far as what those are, those drastically deal with that. The services that we like to get into is what we've offered for the veterans on-demand right now. Any service that you provide, either you have a car sitting around waiting to provide a trip, whether anybody calls or not, or you have a service in the background, that's kinda how our service for veterans on-demand is, it's baked on top of Uber, Lyft, so someone else is paying the dwell time. A call comes in, you have a response time that's adequate, somebody, you only pay the actual trip cost. Once something gets popular enough, so you're delivering enough trips, a different type of service where you have somebody sitting there waiting, the dwell time, you're there waiting to provide a service. At some point in time, when you have enough trips, the cost per trip goes down and that type of service makes sense. But those are the things that we were proposing to consider as we get into. The exact example is trying to deal with the providing customers to the Lecon School of Dentistry is a very similar offering that we were setting up with the, like we've used with the veterans on-demand, it would be essentially no dwell time. It's a, from this location to this location is an authorized free trip, you book it and you're able to deal with it. But those are all the types of things, but I mean, those, you're gonna hear me say it, because it's gonna be fifty times in the stormwater discussion here this afternoon. Those are those recommended policy decisions.
We're out of here.
Not this afternoon, sir. That was just. I did not mean.
You're using up the stormwater time right now.
So, but everything that was mentioned, I agree, those are the policy decisions of what the intentions of, but I know I've heard numerous times that we, I would be happy to come back and we will show the costs via each route. I'm looking to say, do you want more work sessions? Do you wanna liven and color a report here for the next couple of board meetings to deal with that? But clearly, you want more information to make a better decision on where this is at. The results of something like this, this is massive change, we are talking, this is probably something that you wouldn't implement until the April, May, June time. I mean, it really involves telling the public that we're gonna massively change the schedule. It's not something we wanted to do tomorrow. I mean, these are, these are major issues for a transit system.
Okay, 'cause I got four people on the board here. Jason, you're up next.
Yeah, I mean, so as I'm looking at this, we already know that cost is gonna increase significantly over the coming years, significantly. We need to look at a cap. I mean, how much, Chad, how much right now currently is your budget for operators, mechanics, supervisors, and any type of admin costs that are implemented in running this today?
Without having the document right in front of me, sir, our annual fully burdened operating cost of all of Transit, my best guess is fifteen or sixteen million.
Okay, so we're looking at fifteen, sixteen million, probably, I would think that we're gonna grow that if we do these, whatever, we change the schedule, you know, costs are gonna increase. I mean, I could see us in the next five, I mean, what would you say that this budget has increased within the last, let's say, five years? From a percentage standpoint, did it go from ten to fifteen? Or five to sixteen? What was that, what's that number?
Again, I don't have my annual NTD reports, National Transit Database reports, you're in the ballpark of the ten to fifteen over the last five years.
Okay, so in the next ten to fifteen, we're probably gonna look at another increase of ten million dollars, and now we're looking at twenty-five to thirty million over time based on cost. So we really need to analyze what we're doing with this, because here's the thing, you're gonna have to, I mean, if you want drivers that are, we're gonna have to pay them more, right? Those increase are gonna, those costs are gonna increase, and if we're gonna hold on to them, because it does us no good to keep training more drivers that are out there, that's even costing us more money, right? Anytime we lose somebody, it's costing us more money to train somebody up, to get somebody back on the street, to continue to do this over and over again. We may need to look at a situation where we say, okay, this is the cap on our routes, and then we contract the on-demand services out at possibly discounted rate. We need to look at.
He's completely off Zoom. Oh, wait.
Maybe I was cut out there, but my point is, is that we need to continue to look at how we reduce the cost, and it might be, hey, we're only doing so many routes, this is the route, this is how many, how many times we're gonna come by the station, and then contract the rest of it on-demand. We need to fix this cost as much as possible, if that makes sense.
All right.
Hello?
We hear you, you were.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you heard that last part. Essentially, what I'm saying is that we need to fix our costs as much as possible, because if not, this thing could spiral out of control, to where now this whole program's costing us thirty million, forty million. Any thoughts on that, Chad?
Be the desire of the board, it's one of those mission statements of typically, rather than we use the zero-based budget and you build forward, it could be one of those things where, it's one of those things that the budget decision, as you look forward to, this is how much you got, and this is, you show your services and it stops at that point in time as you build your budget annually. So it would be a different way of doing things, but it would be a very clean way of doing that. Your cost, if you're talking, mixing contracting in, those are tricky services because you have to. you can say my vendor only gets this, but at some point in time, what gets you to cap the cost of a vendor is you have to say service is done. It, it, this is the amount of service a vendor can perform and it has to stop here. Like either I'm out of money or I'm done for the day or something like that. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my point is that it's not just the routes, it's everything else in between. So it's the maintenance, it's buying new buses, it's, it's, there, there's just so much extra cost that we have to look at. We, we really need to dive deep into this and see how we can, all right, this is, this is the amount that we're going to spend and that's it. We, if we go above it, then that's it. We have to start farming stuff out, third party, let them, let them handle the bulk of the transit. Because I can tell you right now that in the next 10 years, we're looking at, I mean, there's a possibility that this, this program could cost us $40 million a year. You know, that's, that's not out of the realm. And so those are types of things that we need to think about that, but that's all I have. Thank you.
So I'll just cut to the chase. I have a solution. I want staff on this board to consider spinning out transit entirely from county government. I'd like for it to be considered as an independent transit authority, just for Manatee County. And here's why, potentially other counties as well. But here's why. I've studied the evolution of transit systems in Florida, in our region and in other states. Manatee Counties in particular started off with two private companies, Bradenton, Palmetto, Cities Transit. County bought them in the seventies. Now here we are decades later with a very sprawling expansive system. If you look at Pinellas, PSTA, in the eighties up until the modern day, they've essentially taken various public routes, consolidated them into one authority. What has that allowed them to do? One, dedicated funding and a specific and singular focus on transit. One of the things that we'll always struggle with, and you're not going to solve this with increased service intervals and the less productive routes, because your problem is money. We robbed our temporarily the library funding to fund transit. I, it was opposed to that, but I also understood that it was done so we could Band-Aid in the short term and in the long term have a real plan. Now, I do think that we need you guys, we still need the Band-Aid fixes in the short term. So I do think the additional data points from, well, it's not even data points, it's projections. Will increased intervals in those less productive routes actually produce more riders? I'll just tell you, crystal ball, I think you'll hit a plateau at a certain point because the land use simply does not support. I mean, you can put a 15-minute service to Myacca. I mean, the reality is there's only so many people that live in Myacca. I think Commissioner Feltz would agree. It's, you hit a plateau at a certain point, but more importantly, you hit a plateau because there's only so many people willing to take it. When I look at the routes, for example, you have north-south connections. That's traffic from De Soto, the Green Bridge. Those are places that, I mean, people just not, are just, would rather sit in their own cars rather than in the bus. That's just reality. Now your east, now your Bradenton routes are very productive because certainly they're sitting in traffic, but it's not like you're in rush hour traffic on the bridge. So I do think that the additional data from projections rather for increased service intervals, but more importantly, cost, which you're just not going to have the money for it, frankly, I'll answer that now. It will be useful, but also looking at the land use and hopefully that doesn't take too much time with development services. And then come back to it with a plan about what routes to potentially cut service for. But as we've talked about privately, I do think you should also come back with some concepts for, what was the term again? It's, it's not fixed service, it's on-demand service. So whether it's be via our own model with, whether it's an extension of what we do with veteran services. I mean, Sarasota's done Breeze on Demand, or we contract out with like a freebie type of thing. It's something worth evaluating so we can make up the gap in immediate service cuts. And that's, that's just something that I think this board needs to also hear. It's cuts to direct service, certainly. But if we're saying the on-demand services are cheap and these private companies are coming out of the woodwork saying it's cheap, then it's worth us in the public hearing, just how much cheaper, but also how much more effective they can be in backfilling the gaps. That's your Band-Aid. Long-term transit authority, it's obviously going to take state action, but what it would do is obviously take away transit from county, the county entirely. It's an independent sunshine board. And why I advocate for that is because I don't, I think fundamentally, if, if this function is continuing to stay under Manatee County government, then it's always going to be a competing priority with libraries or other things. Or maybe you get commissioners that hate public transit in the future and will defund it entirely. I will tell you that transit is not always going to be the hottest topic, especially in this county. And so I look to the future, whatever growth patterns might look like in districts one, five. I think they will be better served with a board of engineers, traffic engineers, members of our community in the business, in particular, business community that can understand transit and think about it independently. They can also have their independent taxing authority that frees up funds from our end to just dedicate to other buckets. But it also allows them to singularly focus on federal and state dollars. That allows you to get things like the BRT in Pinellas. And more importantly, it allows them to have a larger voice in front of DOT, US and FDOT, to advocate for significant infrastructure investment, well, infrastructure projects. But we as a county, they probably just ignore and tell us to go pound sand with the MPO. If you have a larger area of coverage, let's say Sarasota decides to join in on that, now you can actually have a transit authority that can make and advocate for significant changes on 41. You can have bigger, better conversations with Army Corps when it comes to water taxis, that type of thing. I think in the long run, over the next year, it's, it's something worth considering. And I've talked to some folks in Sarasota County. I think there have been prior efforts to this, but never anything formal. But it's worth considering and I think they might be open to it too. At the end of the day, you're going to accomplish greater efficiencies. You'll avoid competing interests, defunding public transit. And you'll take it out of this board's hands and put it in the hands of people that are a little bit more experienced and have more of a singular interest in transit. So that's just my opinion. I'd like to hear what the board has to say about it.
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
All right.
Okay. So I, I actually really like the idea that Commissioner Cruz brought up about maybe just having a few very core routes that are extremely efficient and then figuring out some better on-demand services. Because if you look at Palmetto, for example, you know, right now it just feels like they're, they're losing service. They're not, they're, they're not really getting much in return. And you know, they do have freebie available, which is, which is helpful. But you know, right now, the service is so limited that you have low ridership because people would either take the freebie or they'd walk across the bridge because it'd be quicker than taking the bus. So I, I think the idea should be to focus on those core routes, make them extremely efficient, extremely quick, so that people can rely on it and know, listen, if I need to get a bus, I can, I can wait 20 minutes and the bus will be there and it's going to be reliable. And then, you know, have that, have that model where you're getting that last mile with, with micro or on-demand, maybe contracted out. I, I don't know about the idea of a transit authority. I, I don't know that I'm in favor of creating a separate entity with a separate taxing authority. I don't know that the, a lot of constituents would be in favor of that because a lot of people don't use transit. And so they don't necessarily want to be taxed separately for something like that. But that's just my two cents.
All right. Yeah, I'll be fast because I don't think we're actually going to get to any conclusion or anything here. Couple of things real quick. One, whether or not it's free or not, we, we weren't really collecting a whole lot of money anyway. I don't think that's moving the needle. I mean, before we made it free, we were, our, our fare boxes are like 1.1, 1.3 million gross. So we came to the conclusion approximately 25% of that actually hits the bottom line once we've handled the collections and everything else. So we were like 250, 300 grand, that doesn't cover one of these lines. The amount of decrease in ridership in exchange for the nominal increase, I don't think would make a whole lot of sense. We also had discussions years ago at that time that they, we were at a point where upgrading fare boxes were going to be a necessity because they were older ones that didn't collect money the same way people pay. That was a large, I think $5 million, it's years ago, but I think it was like $5 million upfront capital cost, which was going to eat up years of actual fares. So it, so I hear you, but that, that's, I, I don't know if the, the bang's worth the buck. I think what you're going to end up doing is just lessening the rest of the transit and not really getting the money for it. The reason we can't keep employees in part is, look, this is a problem we have across all of our departments right now. There's not enough people who are working in these kind of industries at the local level. And so all we're doing, it, it's not that we're not offering anymore, it's just we're in arm's race. And you want this perfect example, go look at our sheriff budget. Our sheriff, the, the deputy pays have gone up dramatically. Not that they don't deserve it, but it's gone up, not based on inflation, but because we increased ours and then Sarasota increased theirs, then Pinellas increased theirs, then we had to increase ours again. Four of the top seven deputy pays on the scale in the entire state of Florida in this one little region, not because we have more crime, but because it, it's just an arm's race. Same thing's happening with the buses. Because we hire somebody, train them, and then the school board steals them away, then Breeze steals them away, then we come back and steal them away, then Pinellas steals them away. And, and they're flexible. It doesn't even have anything to do with cost of living because they can live anyplace. You know, we, we see this with our paramedics at EMS, getting taken by ALS to the fire. That's just a, a fundamental issue that it's very easy to cross a border and go work for somebody else and just get paid a little bit more without any effort whatsoever when you are in a high-demand, low-supply job position that, that people or Sarasota's having the same issues. On the MPO, they were saying how they didn't, they couldn't handle all their routes. So they're trying to hire our school buses. At one point, they talked about staggering start times of schools for the sole purpose of being able to use the same driver for multiple age groups, just because they can't hire more. That, that, that's, that's a fundamental break in how we're hiring people. I don't think there's a solution to that unless you go out and find a lot of other bus drivers or everyone disagrees to pay substantially more, or we start colluding on some sort of illegal price fixing in terms of refusing to pay anyone and getting all the other counties to fix their pay as well. And then we'll all end up in some sort of federal court. It, I, I don't know the solution. I think this is something we need to have a bigger, I, I've given my kind of thought. I think those, the core route system makes sense. And then you just have some sort of last mile to get them there. I agree, this is not door-to-door. We're not creating Uber and Lyft for people. I think there should be hubs, like Spoke said, and everyone, no one seems to mind, well, they, maybe they mind, but they, they suck it up that they have to fly to Atlanta on that, on Delta before they go someplace else. And then they have to transfer. So if you have some sort of system that can get you from a hub someplace over to Lecon and Lakewood Ranch, and that's on, you know, that's something to consider where we only have the fixed routes. Plus it'll help with traffic, honestly, because you don't have buses going all over the place at the, at the same time. But the transit authority is an interesting concept. Probably literally zero transit operations in the entire country make money. So I don't know who you're going to get to do that unless to Commissioner Ballard's point, they just have taxing authority to gouge people. Cause right now, most of our routes are covered by grants and MPOs and other things that we have access to. I, I don't know what transit authority would voluntarily take, I perpetually losing business model. It would just become an enterprise fund where they would just continuously increase. It, it, it would be one of those things where they have to keep, you keep increasing fares to break even because they have a balanced budget kind of approach. And every time you increase fares, you get less riders, which means you have to increase fares more. You see that with income taxes and states with, with outward migration. I, I don't know if that's necessarily the solution. I mean, sometimes we have to make tough decisions here and this is one of them. I don't think we can just kick the can off on there because we won't find it. We didn't find a single person willing to handle our water taxi. I don't know who's going to handle our entire transit route. Not to mention they'd have to work with us because we're, we're approving the projects, we're approving, we're, we're fixing the roads, we're handling. Like, you know, there would be a lot of coordination. I think it'll be more headache than it's worth. Commissioner Feltz.
Some of the notes that I was making here, have we pretty much, are, are we kind of at a consensus that this?
All the buses are going to Myacca.
I'm not putting a bus in Myacca. We're going to have a hayride. But are we kind of at a consensus here to, to get back to the, the mission of this work session? Are we all kind of at a consensus that we're not really quite comfortable with the proposed solution of eliminating these routes until we put maybe some answers to what we've been talking about up here this morning? I mean, we could just stop right now and say, hey, sounds great, let's go. But I think we've brought up some really good things that maybe with just a little bit more.
I just think if you're going to shock the system, you shock the system. What, why Band-Aid it and then next year have another work session to take one more route away?
Well, could we, are there some takeaways that we could use from this exercise to, to?
Sure. I, I would, I would like them to come back, the staff to come back to us and say, okay, look at your core routes, the ones that get people to the heart of where things are. Again, just off the top of my head, I was, you know, you got the Island Trolley, obviously you have to keep that and plus that's got the marketing and stuff. You got 99 routes, you got the, the Manatee Avenue and you got Cortez, start with those. What does that cost to run those things as super efficiently as we can to maximize ridership and fill those buses? If you removed everything else, does removing everything else balance that out? And what kind of surplus do we have after that? If we have that surplus, how can we best utilize it for last mile to get people to those main routes? We may end up looking at it saying, if you cut everything else off and keep those four, we're actually going to be $5 million in the green and we can spend two of it on freebies, getting people to those main routes. Plus a once every 60 or 120 minute shuttle from Lakewood Ranch over to one of those routes and up from Palmetto to one of those routes. And we still end up in the green, in which case we could put the money back at the libraries and we've got some runway for the next couple of years without charging fares. I'd like to see those numbers to see if that works.
And to continue, I said, I, I, I understand where Tao is going and this, this, this is kind of a situation that I've, I watched mass transit expand, you know, in, in my long lifetime here. But we do have, I, I think another area of exploration because people are becoming, well, what, what, what I experienced was a lot of American ingenuity and our capitalistic urges that there may be some of these situations where we may be able to supplement our, our transit with partnerships, just as we do with getting grants and things. Main reason people have an issue either with Uber is safety issues or, or cost. So as far as an on-demand thing, but if we could cover our core routes, there's, might be some particular to the area, private-public partnerships that could supplant this. I, I do hesitate whether we can continue to offer a free service. There is a cost. And it, it's a great, and when you think of that, most of your people that are needing a transit service are because they don't have cars, that they don't drive and they're probably mostly trying to get to work. You know, Florida is a, a car-centric state. People do like getting in their cars and, and going somewhere. But we have to answer, mass transit has to not only answer in being able to provide a service for people to get to work, but now we're looking at it as a way of reducing our, our demand for infrastructure and, and roadways and things like this. So it's a, it's a little bit bigger, a picture, on the big picture side, as far as how this area is growing, that, you know, we don't just expect mass transit to get somebody from point A to point B. We're really having to look at these services to alleviate our, our need for bigger roads and, and more cars on the road and more cops to keep those cars from bashing into it. Or it's a little bit bigger than just getting it from point A to point B. And I think that's the kind of realm where, where, we're trying to envision here. So I hope that, that we can conclude this with an objective of where we go next. And I think we've kind of expressed a consensus of, can we go back and tweak this a little bit to give us that core route plan? And evaluate this, I, and I'm still, I'm, I'm hung up on your staffing. I know that, that it's a problem everywhere and it's not anything that I wouldn't ask any other department. But, you know, what can we do? What can we do? Do we have? Do we have any, with our EMS shortage and things like that, we've got technical colleges that are feeding people into the system, that are provide training. You know, some people actually do love to drive big monster machines, okay? Are we offering them some opportunities? So I think I'd like to just give you the opportunity to think about those things. And again, what else can we do besides just handing you more money and agreeing to whatever you put before us without asking, I think, some more pertinent questions as far as can we do a little bit better? Can we work a little bit harder, a little bit smarter, and see if we could come up with something that just doesn't just answer, well, today, we're just going to get rid of these routes and let the chips fall where they may. We already got chips falling around all over the place with garbage cans right now. I dread another change. But can we put, can we take the things that the board has said to you and maybe come back with something to address your staffing issues, something to provide us with core routes, and maybe those supportive routes that will answer today's needs, but give us some idea how we could move on into the future? Because it's going to happen, and we'll just be back here next year.
All right. I got two people on the board. I got Jason, and then I have Commissioner Sadek, and then I will let Chad round this up so we can take a break because I feel like we've now just said literally everything 14 times. I think he got the direction, but there's two people on the board, so I'll let them both speak. Jason, you did have your hand up. Are you still on the board? Commissioner Beard?
Yes, I'm sorry. I did have some words. Okay, so Chad, right now, the buses run from what hours to what hours? Eight to five? Seven to six?
It's a very generic turn depending on the route, but roughly six to eight PM.
Six to eight PM. Okay. Six to eight PM. Okay. Here's my thoughts. You're saying that our budget's roughly around 15 to 20 million, in particular regarding transit. Why don't we look at splitting the cost here? Let's look at splitting it with 10 million for transit routes and 10 million for third-party, kind of like Uber routes, and seeing, right, I'm just using this as an example. This is not an exact number, but seeing how many people will use the third-party service as well as the transit service. But then if they use, utilize a third-party service, let's just say that service goes just during working hours, so they can utilize it from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, okay? And they have to register within that platform in order to utilize that service. And let's just say that maybe that's a $10 a month, you know, operational cost that could help us cover some of the cost for these services that are being rendered. These are just, this is just a thought that's out there, but we're going to have to make some decisions, and sometimes you just got to go for it and just see if it works. Right now, we don't know what works. We're just losing money hand over fist. We don't have any idea. We have no data to base any decisions off of. We have nothing. So we have to test the market to see what works and what doesn't work. And this might be the route that we have to go. Maybe we allocate just 5 million to that service. I don't know. These are discussions that, you know, maybe we can have to figure out what is that number. But I don't know. What are your thoughts on that, Chad?
I am, as a summary statement, ready to come back with, I think, something that would work with this. It will involve a number of things. I mean, it talks about what we feel is the core route. We would want to validate that. Does that meet the expectations of the board of what a core route is? What are the zones that should be considered that don't need to be left with nothing? So some versions of different zones for on-demand. The types of things that we would like to put out there that's very clear that in this zone, you may expect to have access to some fixed route service. In this zone, you will not have access to fixed route service as a general expectation, something that, things that the board can adopt and put forward. So the people that think they should have access to something when they move here, it may not be there. But I am very clear on what I feel you are wanting to see. The speed at which I can bring that back, we'll see exactly how quickly to do that. This is entering the idea of a transit development plan. We're kind of mid-cycle, but it's not a terrible thing to per se do. Ryan, if I didn't introduce him properly, he is our consultant, our transit expert. He used to be our transit planner here at Manatee County, now works with Kimberly-Horn. We have access to help to move a lot of this on directly through there. Believe it or not, I see this as productive because that's my whole point. I am looking for those policy directions to be clear on what we should be aiming at as the definition of success for Manatee County Transit.
All right. Commissioner Sadek on the board, and he is what stands between us and recess. So I'll just, or so.
So I agree on, I agree in the core routes. I think core routes, but I also think service too. So we talked to any transit experts, planners, 15 minutes usually the ceiling for really good service, but I'm also a realist. So I think, I don't like 30 minutes. Let's keep it, let's, I would be curious to see what 20-minute service max looks like on the less-trafficked routes and look at 15 for some of the other ones, and then see what that looks like. But I think the 30-minute and up service routes are just, we're just going to be wasting money on some of those. I think those are routes that people are already utilizing in heavy volume in anyways, and so they might benefit from being able to get to Publix faster or the county government faster, or Sheriff, whatever, wherever you need. Core routes, more frequent service. I think eventually, a consumption model versus free needs to be evaluated, but I would say as a starting point, perhaps not the direct routes, maybe, well, let's think about it, whether it's the freebie or the on-demand service. But I think there's some truth to people not wanting their taxes to go into buses, but there is also truth in people wanting to pay for it. But we're looking at a state that wants to eliminate ad valorem, so I think consumption models are probably the way of the future. We'll see how that goes. So I think there needs to be a thoughtful approach to that. I do want to see whether we, whether we want to do a Transit Authority or something else. I think we can't ignore the reality that Route 99 is our most productive route because that corridor has students, workers, Sarasota to Bradenton could be Palmetto one day. It's a very dense route. And so I think we're, we're losing, the competition for drivers and resources isn't going to help us. So I'd at least like staff to talk to Sarasota County and see, because I know we have contract-type quirks and issues here and there with them being paid, us being free. Longbow on-demand is another interesting agreement, but they're somewhat brittle. And so I think there's some collaboration there that we can, we can engage in. So I don't, perhaps one day, you get one, one system operating it. If it's independent or not, we can figure it out. But I do think there's some collaboration worth exploring because we'll have greater efficiency economies of scale. The other, the other thing that will help us do is connect Lakewood Ranch, both sides, north-south, Sarasota-Manatee side, probably through on-demand. University to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, Lakewood Ranch Main Street, for example. That's a pretty powerful connection to have, potentially North County from there. So I think there's something worth there, but I'd like to see some conversations happen. I know they would be interested because I've talked to their administration. That's all. Thank you.
Chad, last word.
I'm clear.
You're good? You got some thoughts and directions up here?
I feel I'm very clear. Typically, my style would be an update memo and/or a consent item that just is a report back to the board that lays out our plan on, that you could have some expectations on when I can bring info back.
Good. I love consent items. Thank you. Okay. With that, we will take a 10-minute recess till 10:40. Come back, talk about Stormwater. All right. We're back for the third item, Stormwater Funding Policy Decisions. A Path Forward. It's a very literary title for this.
I'm out of time right there. For once, I actually had this presentation taken care of, finished a couple of weeks ago. It was actually attached to the work session. So there's tons of words within there. Let me just begin with just trying to say of what we're trying to do. We had the, a time when I came to you in April and said, hey, are we or are we not serious about talking about a Stormwater, a dedicated Stormwater funding fee? And we got a motion, very specific, and I put it right there, that the board said, yes, we are serious, we should definitely talk about that. And so, in the prep of right at the end, when Evan was leaving and when Evan had left, we had chosen this, this work session as a date of when we would bring it back. Everything that I tried to get ready to talk about, to move this forward, kept bringing back bad, 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 painful memories of 2019. So if there is... So, if there is an edge in my voice, it's mainly about, I, if we're going to move forward, I cannot go down the path I did the last time, which was unfortunately, just not giving enough understanding to how many decisions incrementally need to be made along the way to inform the public, to inform the board of how it's impacting people, how it impacts how much funding that you're, you're collecting, and just all the details, because technically, most of those little decisions are policy decisions. There's a not, not a right or wrong. So, to summarize the 20 slides that I, I think there's 20 or something, that are putting it before you, is I am trying to say that incrementally, I have hypothetically summarized the intentions of categories of some extremely major decisions that truly are policy decisions that lead staff to a point by midsummer next year, to be able to truly try to bring you a useful program that is really close to being something that could be voted on for adoption and implementation. And I'm looking for that support through this quick presentation of just agreeing that there are lots of those policy decisions, to do them incrementally, one at a time, one at a time, is so that keeps the deep involvement with the public, because maybe only one of those issues involves, or is near and dear to someone's heart, or whatever, or it gives it time, it gives it time to, you didn't just have one time to complain about it. I don't want to refer to the trash thing, but I'm just saying, I watched the year go by and looking to try to keep things going. When we incrementally make our decisions, we don't waste as much time. If for some reason, we make five at a time, and I come back and I give a presentation and one changes, lots of rework has to happen, because while the other decision may not have been wrong, some of the work associated with those decisions was based on an assumption of a previous decision. So, I'm just, I mean, that's where I am today. That's what I'm trying to breeze through. I'm looking for an acknowledgement that, not necessarily even these are the exact policy things, I can come work with you the rest of the calendar year here to, if these are the things that you feel are there, but I was just trying to point out, they are incrementally very important things that allow a clear direction to the public to be delivered if you really are choosing to implement a dedicated stormwater funding fee. I mean, just the simple idea of who is gonna pay? How much fairness are you looking for? I mean, in many taxes and many revenue streams are like, the, the, the statement gets made, the fair only comes to town once a year, so how far do you go on each, each one? And the biggest thing that we still haven't totally worked together is the why. The why of the funding, that level of service thing comes in there. The why is clear, you want to support and have a dedicated source, because technically you're living off solid waste and funding stormwater. Is that what you want to do for the long term? And then, if you want to do anything extra, there's not a dedicated source, there's not additional funding that makes it easy to do more stuff. So, as I kind of laid this out, I grouped it into just a quick conceptual discussion of things that are really important. I mean, who gets included? Who, who, who gets to pay for this? I, we, we got to the altar. We had seven work sessions last time, back in 2018, 2019. I don't remember how many public meetings I went to, but it was several. Technically, if anybody is interested, I mentioned in April, Dana knows where these books are, there's a district book that keeps all the presentations that we did back in those times, they're up on the ninth floor somewhere, if you're bored and need some extra reading of what we went through in previous times. But one of the biggest issues was, golly, agricultural exempt properties, do they participate or not? How do you deal with all the nonprofits? How do you deal with churches? And it was just, we, we had the technicalities of the basis of, we want to, we want to charge people based off impervious area, and that's the logical thing, that's how stormwater works, but we didn't have our eyes dotted and our t's crossed, and ultimately, that's what led to bank, coming out. So, if you talk about all the things that get wrapped up into how do you deal with things that are fairness? I mean, a lot of it is just, how are we gonna collect a fee? Which way do you want to do it? Do you give credits? Do you have someone that's just flat out exempt? I mean, those are things that gotta get built into your implementing rules, your operating rules. It's not just the rate, it's how to deal with when someone has a dispute, dispute resolution, what are we gonna build into these things? So, I, I felt like I still had the battle scars from going through it, and that was unfortunately, the lessons learned, where we were hyper-focused on the goal, but didn't have the big picture.
Chad, the policy decision one, so Tom Gerstemberger talked to us about how to carve up different watersheds, I think that was the way to divide up the county, but we were looking at the scope. So, where did that conversation go?
So, in, in what we are talking about typically, or what, and that's where it goes with, when we get into the one that talks about how to collect the fee, I am talking about the bulk stormwater maintenance and operations fee. I mean, this is what you do to clean, operate, mow, tree, water quality. What you would do in one place, you would do everywhere. The stuff that is betterment, that was where I was hinting at, those probably still end up being maybe basin specifics, where there's a standalone assessment project, like an MSTU that specifically deals with that. So, that was, but that's a uniqueness that needs to be that deep discussion with you when you consider the type of way you want to consider collecting the funds. If you collect it with a millage, there's a way that's beneficial and fair to everybody. If you collect it as a special assessment, there's a way that has to, you have to show the same benefit to everybody that's paying into it. If it's just a fee, like a monthly fee on a, on a trash bill, it's a very different thing than any of those other two, but that's where that comes in, where if we, and that's where I call also, when you were at the level of service, what is the work that you want to be included? Because that can drive the decision on how you want to collect that. So, I, I almost picture there always being two things, sir. I mean, it, it would be potentially the funding source that is something different than this, that's the super big mega improvement benef, you know, betterment projects, but the true maintenance, going and cleaning the things that we didn't, hadn't done, similar to what the extra funds that you allowed to the team this year, Carmine, Jeff, and Scott. You all right, man? You're looking a little red there. They've been, made good progress on the Braden River pieces, a Gamble Creek and things, that extra money has been.
Can I make a suggestion really quick? Can we go through the whole presentation first, and then ask our questions after he's given the presentation? So that we don't get off track?
I, I don't find that likely for this board to go off track, but I, I do agree that we should go through the presentation, because if we stop every single slide, we're on some sort of a schedule, because people have other commitments, so. Chad, why don't you go through these slides?
Okay. I think, I think I was at number three. I was talking about the, the level of service. I mean, this is ultimately the driving force, which will dictate your goal. What is your revenue source? How much are you trying to look to fund? My stormwater management program, my stormwater operations program is this much. That, that's the basis of what trying to do, level of service, but it also allows you to set that expectation to the public for making them understand, a road that is in a subdivision, curb and gutter roadway, might hold water for two hours after a six-inch rain, and in an hour is perfectly acceptable, because it didn't get in your house or things. But I mean, that's all those types of things that are wrapped up into that level of service that drives cost, what is frequency, which things are we going to take care of, what are things that the county is going to maintain? The problem that we had, we discussed, the stormwater goes everywhere, whether it's on county property or not on county property, but that's one of the bigger and deeper discussions that has to be done. And I hinted towards that, I had mentioned that already, the collection method. The collection method will dictate an awful lot of what may be your administrative costs, how do you, what goes about it annually to dictate what's legal to put it in place so you're able to collect that money? How you're able to use that money? Are there restrictions? Do you have to show equal benefit across every commission district, area, basin districts? There's different rules that apply for the different ways that you may collect these And the nuances, we got down to at the final time back in 2019, and we went through, we were just saying, hey, who are the, the 200 biggest fees on there? And we ran into some oddities, and we, we have to come out with those clarities. What about government-owned properties? What about government, the airports? Again, I come back to the churches, condos and things. We had a lot of details that we hadn't worked out, that just to be, need to be known upfront when we go in to this. Credits, I mean, there's one of those things, I mean, is everybody in the county gonna participate, or is it only gonna be if you're in these urban service area? I mean, what, those are still unique policy decisions that need to be discussed, and that's how you deal with the credit, or who's included. At the end, I, this is kind of a catch-all, this is one of those things where if we've made all those decisions, we want to review according to things, and that's where this is driven a lot by property management and public works and financial management in most of the development of what we're, we would be proposing, but we need to involve everybody that's a stakeholder. I mean, we have our land development codes, we have our comp plans, and we have other missions and objectives across the departments. We want to make sure that we haven't set something up that we're gonna be in conflict with, so that, I mean, that's that last pause before we say, I guess you'd call that the pre-final? Pre-final plans of where we're at. That's kind of that pausing point with policy discussion with number six. By the time we get through this, are, is our budget situation within the county different? Is our political situation different? Are we still moving forward with this? That's at one time to adjust. Following something like that, it would be the intent that you would be able to return something to staff, and we produce a, a product that is what we would think implementable. So, that would be where we would test it and take it out to the public, and hopefully be able to answer every question that there is out there by pointing at things in writing and are able to do that. And that, that, this is me just saying, my objective for what our discussion today was, was, do we agree? Those are really important policy decisions. The board wants to be involved in making those policy decisions. They agree, they can be incremental in nature, because how would we get through these, is what I've got left here. I'm looking for regular engagement with the board and the public. So, we, so wanting to hit each one of those six items in its own meeting, in its own month, trying to focus on things. So, what would that look like? That would look like setting the stage for a nice fun 2026 spring, and continually making our progress towards having a.
Yeah, let's do it. 26.
And, but, at the same time, I mean, to meet, to, to where I was trying to do, I talked to Stephanie, I have Ogden here, what we certainly learned, we attempted community outreach back in 2019, 2019, we established a website, anything we presented, we put out there, we held some public meetings, but I mean, we really have felt that the aggressiveness of trying to say, did you know this decision is being made? We have to engage with the social media, we have to engage, if this is your topic that you want, these meetings are taking place, and each time, hopefully, we have a, a public meeting that's available, whether it's a Zoom meeting, or whether it's spread out through each of the districts, but we need to be able to say that we've definitely offered to the public, this is something that is being considered that will affect your pocketbook, this is something that is being considered. We definitely, and this was me referring to all the stuff that has to be worked on between here and the end of the year. If we say go, if we say we like this idea, we're willing to tackle an, an object this big, we do need to spin up our website, we do need to set out some promotional materials, not promotion, because we're not, we're not doing that, education materials, what are we going to do? Setting out, this is our commitment to you, these are the information things that we are going to make aware, how are we gonna keep you involved going forward? And then, within those meetings, each board meeting, each month, typically, we have two board meetings, with, so the intent would be, we can have the detailed presentation where on those topics, I am, I, the team is able to present to you the nuances and the details of either the six different decisions that are policy decisions that are needed under those topics, or at least talk to you about the nuances and the impacts, and whether we make a decision that day, or we leave, and we have that opportunity for public input and emails and correspondence in between the meetings, the second meeting of a month, there's another agenda item that says, this is the decision and we're moving forward, and we do the thing the next time on the next month. So, that was the concept of making them monthly topics, maybe a deep discussion at one meeting, and maybe a vote on the second meeting was the vision that was there. That's essentially how a plan forward is put together. Over the summer, because of having those input things that allows staff to go back, validate everything that we've had, did I get all the answers happened, maybe fill in a few blanks, and then it's meant to put a draft item together that has the ability to answer all the questions. I live at this address, how much am I gonna pay? I live at this address, why am I paying that much? How come my neighbor pays a dollar more than I do, or a nickel less than I do? I want to be able to answer all those questions with a program that we're able to come back. Adoption and presentation, that can take as long as it needs to take. If we all remember, there's something that happens next fall in 2026, so that doesn't have to happen that fast. If one of your ways of adoption, it, it is easy, is because if, if your intention is a millage or a special assessment that needs to make it onto the tax rolls, usually you're tied into August, so as long as any decision's made after that, we're talking August of '27, that becomes the key year anyway, so it's not like you're trying to make a decision right before election, but I mean, just knowing it's a big, it's a long-term process. I'm not trying to say, here's a decision with you right before the midterm elections next year. Attempting to talk smart, just saying, this is, this is not me, this is Stephanie's team, Ogden, taking all the lessons learned from the Big Ben campaign, taking, Ogden and I all lived the, and Myra, and Carmine, and the majority of us lived the 2019 campaign, trying to take that in there of the, the lessons learned of where we were and what we would need to do to move forward. So, you had a presentation that was from somebody that is gun-shy about a large program like that, because we did live it five years ago, six years ago, and wanting it to be a team effort. I am definitely, and the team behind me is ready, they're passionate about what they want to do, they want to take the county further on and provide those, that enhanced, higher level of service, that can be planned and predicted with an appropriate budget. This is a way to do it, but I am looking for that buy-in from the board, that it's definitely a team effort to answer a lot of the questions, so what gets presented to you is what you want.
All right, Presser Bearden?
That was the last slide.
I see this in two ways. One, I see an option for a stormwater utility fee, which is area-based, all right? How this might work is, we can create a stormwater utility district for the affected basins, or the actual neighborhoods. Properties pay a monthly or annual fee based on the actual area or the parcel size, and the reasons this might work is that it, we can, we can map out the drainage basin and only charge parcels that contribute to the runoff to that system, if that makes sense. and only charge parcels that contribute to the runoff to that system, if that makes sense. Properties outside that basin would pay nothing. So that might look like a, you know, five to $12 for a single family home, calculated at 1,000 square foot on impervious surfaces. Okay. The other option, and I know this has been talked about, MSBUs. Okay. Municipal Service Benefit Units. We can, obviously no one wants to talk about this, but this situation has to be addressed at looking at special assessments inside a defined area that receives that actual storm water improvement. It's easy to set the boundaries for, for something like that and show that only the benefiting parcels are charged, right? Because we're not going to char, I mean, we, we can't do this countywide. We're not going to charge people in, in East County for storm water issues that are happening in, in District Four. It just doesn't make sense. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. It could help also support those capital improvements and, and ongoing O and M if structured properly. So tho, those are my thoughts. I mean, those are the two options. I, I don't know any other options that we could look at. I mean, obviously we have these issues that need to be addressed, so we're going to have to figure it out. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think the MSBU makes more sense than the TU and here's why. It's not part of your ad valorem, but it's a separate fee. It still shows up, it's not, it's not calculated as a part, as part of your, yeah, your ad valorem tax. So it's a separate assessment and I think you can draw the boundary lines according to the watershed plans that you all had presented, which seem to be the most, make the most sense. I think the challenge is, and I think what, I mean, you say it's a policy decision, number, I think basis of fairness, collection method. I think there's a lot more technical detail staff needs to present to us. And we're talking about impervious service ratio, I mean, previous surface area. I mean, Commissioner Feltz has brought up concerns about, granted, that's some of a policy rec, decision, but we're not going to spend time up here doing math and trying to figure out who, what the exact calculation should be. I do think some evaluation of what other counties are doing and looking at how they've addressed that for rural areas and areas that have more pervious surface, impervious surface rather is, would you, you have enough basis for comparison. So I think let's, let's look to those models. My biggest concern is you're missing a policy decision here really, which is one that affects my district above all others. The implication here is your, whether you talk to Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Sierra Bay Regional Planning Council, the implic, the hidden implication behind all this is your, is massive dredging and offsite water impacts that are going to flow into the Mantle River, Braden River out to the Mantle River and affect the entire coastline with increased water outflows, more nutrients, more red tide, which impacts our economy, quality of life and more. I don't necessarily see a plan to talk about the collection, like where the water outflows will go, but my biggest concern is the state of Florida's legislation that's requiring a lot of offsite impacts to go into wells. I forget what the specific term is. But also in the conversation we've had up until this point, I've simply heard the word dredging a lot. And any of those estuary programs will tell you, that's a very bad idea. You can't just turn your natural waterways into sewers effectively with the increased outflows. So there's a policy decision that needs to be made there as to how we'll go about addressing stormwater needs, because I don't just want all this water outflow and nutrient loads to, to increase in my district affecting all of our, all of our, affecting our entire county really, the economy. Beyond that, I think the, we also need to look at, not necessarily covering the municipalities. City of Bradenton already charges a stormwater fee, so we don't need to double that. I would also be wary of contributing to cities' systems. I think they're self-funded or should be. Certainly there are one-time partnerships perhaps we can have, but I would rather us just focus on unincorporated areas as best we can. But there are some quirks that need to be worked out, especially for places like Northwest Bradenton where you've kind of, you've got city sewer systems, city collection systems, but some of that does go into the county, goes into the intercoastal, some parts of West Creek. So it's a little bit weird. I think the quirks need to be worked out because the boundary lines are a little bit strange. But again, my chief concern is just how are we managing stormwater outflows? The other thing that's missing is the responsibility aspect. And part of that needs to be on development too. We've talked a lot about stormwater standards being 25-year minimums, not, not being sufficient at 25-year. But when I look at plans for certain housing projects that have come before us, they're just using the waters, the systems we're created to just dump water out and claim that the outflow is not necessarily, the amount of water isn't necessarily increasing, which, okay, sure, that's what you claim. But they're, they're simply leveraging our systems. And so my concern is with more development, you'll see more runoff, more nutrient loads. What we're not seeing is that sense of responsibility that we should implement in our land development code. Granted, we have SB 180 precluding that, but that does need to be a factor in stormwater conversations is what responsibility should we also be making sure developers have with their projects? Because there needs to be more onsite, you know, consideration for more onsite retention. I don't just want them leveraging all these great new waterways we've built and then they're just dumping out more water into our, into the systems affecting everyone else. So just summarizing that, I think we need to have a policy decision around how we're managing stormwater outflows, who that's affecting, and some considerations for additional strategies for how we manage offsite impacts and who's responsible.
First off, I'd like to thank the stormwater fee attempts from 2018 or else I probably wouldn't be here right now. So thank you. But that was what, I, I, it was a great impetus. And I'm very appreciative that you have recognized some of our foibles with that because it was quite a cluster. But for better for worse, it's, I owe a lot to your stormwater fee attempts. I'm going to make a statement here that I'm, I'm sorry, but I am not in favor of the fee, tax, whatever it was. We've just got too much money out there that you're going to have to, and, and I believe we could sell this just as much to our public. This is a very important part of living in Florida. We have water everywhere. And I, I just am not comfortable with going to my constituents and asking them to fund something that is, we could find the money somewhere else. I understand where it comes from that, oh, well, we can't spend this money on that or we can't spend that many of that. Water has to do with every aspect of everything that we do. So yeah, we are going to have to find the money, but I'm not comfortable going to my citizens for it. And if that means we take a little bite out of sports and leisure and we have one less pickleball court, which is a impervious surface, if we up a development fee because it's near a sensitive environment, sensibly environmental land, that's what I could ask for. But I am not going to go to my citizens and ask them to pay more money for something that we all know we're going to have to tighten up and get rid of some frivolous stuff if you want to pay attention to the stuff that is important. So I, I cannot condone that. I understand it's very easy to say, give me more money and give me more people and I'll fix it. The people are saying, we'll, we want to fix this. And I think they're very willing to give up some things in other areas to fix a big problem that we've all known has gone along all, all the while. I sat through nearly every single presentation that was made on the stormwater fee back then, nearly every single one. I attempted to get one out where now we've had more and more development and more and more issues out there. And guess what? Before they were able to hold that town hall, you know who defeated that? It was the people that did. So if I go to my people now and I say, what are you willing to give up so that your streets don't flood, so your houses don't flood? What are you willing to give up? They're going to want to give something up. And that's the policy that I bring to the board from the people that I represent. You want a policy? That's the policy. We want it fixed, but we're willing to give up other things in order to get that fixed. That's how important it is to us. Is it that important to you? Or is it just another thing to hand your, put your hand out and say, give me more money and I'll fix it? It doesn't, it's not going to work that way. It didn't work that way before and it's not going to work that way again. So I suggest that every department has to contribute to this by cutting back on something. And if you want a list from constituents on what they could do without, and they're willing to do without, in order to get a problem solved, I will assemble that for you. And with our DOGE committee and all this kind of stuff, this is how we want, this is how we want to attack it. We want to attack the problem, but we're not going to pay over for things that we don't want and not get what we do want and need. Secondly, it makes no other sense in dealing with the stormwater issue, you, we deal with a, as, as Tal was saying, I, I'm in a situation, I, I have CDDs and STD, I mean, SDDs and all of that kind of stuff out there. In our other, stop. In our other areas, you're dealing with municipalities that are, that, that have their own entities and their own issues. And they need help. The city of Bradenton needs help. It doesn't matter what wonderful things we do. I could tax my citizens millions of dollars, but if the city is throwing sewage into the river that we're all drinking from, what good is that? We have to look at these things because this is water. This has more to do, as I was saying, you have different entities that we deal with. You're going to be dealing with SWF MUD, you're going to be dealing with FDIP, you're going to be dealing with the EPA. Okay? So it makes sense to me that you've got to look at this in some correlation of those geographical areas, because you're, you're battling some things of nature and some things of man. So it makes more sense to me to align your target areas up by those natural geographic and already pre-designated areas. We have the, the Braden River watershed district. We have all these different areas. They've already been classified a watershed district for a reason. So aligning, regardless of how our districts work, of how our representatives work or anything like that, what we're dealing with is, is land and water. Okay? Which it, it doesn't really align itself to, well, you know, there's a bunch of tree huggers that live out here, so we're going to save the water, but over there, nobody cares. So, you know, but that's not the way it works. Everything affects everybody else. So I, I'm just going to make my statement that we're going to have to find this money. We're going to have to find the money. And you want your citizens to look? You want your DOGE committee to look? Because that's what they want. They want this problem solved and they're tired of paying for things that they don't want or need while we prioritize, do not prioritize or put our funds into things that we do need. Secondly, the only logical way to review this and make sense of it and make it effective is to deal with what you're dealing with, land and water and other entities of the state. SWF MUD has a heck of a lot to do with this, all of your, your municipalities and all that, and look at it within those regions. And timing, I mean, I'm looking at this plan and it's like, again, one, one bad hurricane season while we're doing PR and having town halls and creating cartoon characters, and we can have start all over again with Plan B. We don't have the manpower or the ability to both address, repair and maintain. When we, what we've got behind with is a lot of those boots on the ground, the people actually doing the work on a regularly scheduled manner. We've just, I love that you brought up the garbage issue because this is a service that has to be done on a standard operating method in a timely manner. Otherwise you have problems. You may need to, again, we, we, we talk about, we always, we have consultants up here, but we don't have anybody down there that's actually cleaning out the dishes on a regular basis. Or we end up doing jobs that, you know, I watch it all the time, tree trimming around power lines. You know, back in the day, you did a regular trimming of those trees, which lent themselves to horticultural techniques, botany techniques or whatever. We decided that was too expensive and we started hatching everything up. And you know what happened with the next storm? All the trees fall down because there is no balance on the electrical wires. So you didn't really solve anything to begin with. So my suggestion is twofold. Number one, let's find the money. And if you don't know where to find it, I bet you my citizens could tell you where to find it. Secondly, you've got to deal with this on what you're dealing with, which is land and water. And you've got to set up those areas that are at least mimicking or in acknowledgement of how they've already been set up as a watershed district, who's over what things. If we could come back with something like that, I think we have an opportunity to move this program along a little bit swifter than bureaucracy apparently tends to allow it in that we flooded severely last year. We've done nothing so far this year, frankly, frankly. And we're going to have to have something done before next hurricane season.
All right. There's no else on the board and this isn't really getting us anywhere. I don't know if it's worth responding. Look, we, we just, i- i- if this is something that needed to be expedited, we just went through a tear budget process, literally, a tear budget process. Not once did anyone up on this board say, let's find $40 million in pickleball courts and other things. To, to, you, you haven't said it while you sat up on this board. I, I have the floor. I let you talk for 11 minutes. I can talk for three minutes. Thank you. Fisher Feltz, I am speaking. It's not easy to find $40 million. It's offensive to our staff to imply that a 12-month process to create the entirety of a stormwater division and clean up everything before a storm hits is an unreasonable timeline. That is, that, that's ridiculous to say. And it's not even their job to do it because they do not have $40 million. You, as a county commissioner, have $40 million because you just went through nine different budget meetings where you could have found $40 million, not wait until the week after the new fiscal year starts to turn to one single department and tell them to go steal money from other departments post-budget. We are now in a new fiscal year. That budget is now done. So that is not the option on table till next fiscal year, which you don't want to wait for because that is just way too long of a time period. The storms you're referring to happened last year before you were even a commissioner. In all of your time as a commissioner, at no point did you come up with a suggestion for $40 million to fix this problem. So we've directed staff, you directed staff, we voted unanimously to direct staff to bring back the exact presentation you were just given. This is the start of a process, not the finish of a process. I would highly encourage all commissioners who want to have a say in how we're doing this to work with Chad and work with his team, work with Tom to come up with a solution. Because the one thing we can all agree on is allowing future flooding is not the option. That we have now been made aware, well, we had been made aware as Chad pointed out with the 2019 presentations, that there is a problem with our stormwater. It's up to us to work to resolve that problem for our citizens, however it is, with reallocating existing money or finding new money or finding some other unique solution to do it. That's all Chad is presenting is a list of some options. That's all Chad is presenting, is a list of some options to start a process. That's why this is a 12-month process, because there is no silver bullet. There is no money in our back pocket, there is no solution that's going to resolve this in the next two to three weeks in case a storm hits later this storm season. That's just not how the world works. So this is Chad presenting things to start this, and we can all work diligently, and people who are passionate about this, I hope, work very diligently directly with our staff and our administration to come up with solutions to bring back to this board, as I encouraged the other six commissioners to do as well. That's all I have to say. Did you have anything else on your presentation?
No, uh, yes, I had one correction. If I, because it, one, if I forgot to... It was back here, I had a reference to the city areas. I don't remember exactly which slide it was on. Cities, we do not have the authority to do anything, millage or ad valorem. My, my intent of discussing that is it's always a mixed, mixed system with support from solid waste because the cities do pay tipping fees at the landfill. It was, I got confused by my own wanting to remember that they're a part of the system, but that's how they contribute is because we will, you should always have some component potentially from solid waste because of that. It gave a mis- illusion that we were trying to tax the cities, and that was not my intention.
I understand, I didn't take it as that, but, all right. So that's it. I have Commissioner Siddique, and then that's the only person left on the board. I'll then open this up to citizen comments on these agenda items, and that'll be the work session.
Yeah, just based on the conversation, Chad, and I didn't start by thanking you, so thank you and staff for working on this. I'm not necessarily, I don't really think you got your answers for your policy decisions.
Was not, I don't mean to interrupt, sir, I am not seeking those policy decisions. I'm wanting, I'm wanting to say, are we in consensus that we want to go down this road and start tackling this myriad of policy decisions that help us? I, today is not a, today is, oh heck no, I don't even want to touch this with a 20-foot pole, don't bring this back again, or we agree, we do want to tackle this beast.
Okay.
That, that's the consensus I was looking for.
I think from my perspective, it's a pretty resounding yes. I do think it's a problem, not, I mean, it's always a problem, I mean, this is Florida, but I think in particular, last storm season with the sort, the storm surge, the wind, and then the rain events, Debbie clearly showed us the vulnerabilities that we have as a county, and I would say Florida in general, but in particular us. So we, we have, so we, I, I think we owe it to our residents to come up with a process for a good solution, and have public input as well. So I think, yeah, some good questions. Again, I would just throw out the means by which we want to manage the, where that water goes as another important one, especially because of state legislation, but I, I support you going down this path. It's going to be difficult, but it's, it's going to be an important conversation to have with our residents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, I will open up this work session to public comment. It needs to be on the three topics of discussion. Anyone in the public? There's nobody on the phone. I will close public comment. Are there any final commissioner comments?
I do, George.
Go ahead.
I appreciate your consistency, and every time something's brought up, you say, well, you should have done this then, or, or whatever. Kind of repetitious on that, I get it. But I think we've been working extremely hard with, I, I know personally, when we've had site visits, I want to thank the people and the staff that have gone out with me, with citizens, and seen what we're talking about. And I just want to let you know that maybe the people that might be given a little bit more opportunity to speak up should be our staff that knows what I'm talking about. And we have to cultivate a culture where our staff is allowed to speak freely and to provide those thinking skills. I'm not a hydrological engineer, but I know what I see, I know what I hear from my people, and I just innately know things about this water and land that I rely of you guys to stand up there and say something too. So for any comments of whether I have or have not had the proper timing, or I should have said something a few moments ago, I think I've been saying something since 2019. Thank you.